All right. Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started now. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 14th. Mr. McDonald, would you please call the roll?
Sure, thank you. Commissioner Abbey is absent. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Farkas?
Here.
Commissioner McCarty?
Here.
Commissioner Zucker?
Here.
Vice Chair Lagrequist?
Here.
And Chair Comden?
Here.
Six members are present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you.
Chair Comden, before you start?
Yes, please.
My microphone is stuck in the on position.
It is, yes, and my apologies. That microphone is currently broken, so it's either on or off.
Commissioner, you chose to move, so...
Turn it off? Okay, yes, my apologies. We have some supply chain challenges with getting the pieces in.
All right. Before we get started with the normal agenda, I just wanted to acknowledge that there have been some changes that affect our meetings, et cetera. Neta has taken on the role of interim Community Development Director, and thank you for doing so, and good luck with that. And as everyone knows, we've also, we're having a change in leadership with the city manager. So there's a lot going on here. The agenda has always been full. Staff has always had a lot on their plate. I would dare say that they have an awful lot on their plate now, so we're going to do the best we can as a city, as a staff, and as a commission to do what's right for the constituents of the city. With that, let's go into Public Communications. This is the time set aside during the committee meeting for members of the public to address the committee on planning-related matters other than what's on the regularly scheduled agenda. Mr. McDonald, do we have any speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no public communications received for this portion.
Okay, very good. Let's move to the consent items. Number one, approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
Thank you. No public speakers on item number one.
All right, very good. Would anyone like to move that we approve the meeting minutes?
I'll move that we approve the meeting minutes unless anyone has any corrections or anything. I think they were fine.
Do we have a second on that? Okay, please do.
I'm going to give you a second to find. I think it's in the September meeting minutes. Just, there needs to be a correction. So, on page three of four and number three, there's just a typo. The, it says, blah, 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 and lot line adjustment for a four-story building with four live-work units, September 28, 2022, Planning Commission Agenda, page three and 15. That just needs to be striked out.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lagrequist. I see what you're talking about. We'll, we'll clean that up.
All right. Seeing that change, Commissioner Davis?
Um, I think we have to break them out because I can't comment on the second one because I was absent. So maybe we have to do each one separately.
Okay, very good. So this is the approval of the minutes.
Right, but can we, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September with Commissioner Lagrequist's revisions.
Very good. Let's move forward with that vote to approve September 28th minutes, please.
My apologies. Did we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, on the approval of the September 28th minutes, Commissioner Abbey is absent. Commissioner Davis?
I have to abstain because I was absent.
Commissioner Farkas?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lagrequist?
Yes.
And Chair Comden?
Yes.
Five ayes and the motion carries.
Thank you. Now, let's vote to approve the November 8th, 9th minutes. Do I have someone? Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's like a game show. You got to do it quick. All right. Mr. McDonald, would you please take the vote on that?
Sure. On the approval of the November 9th meeting minutes, Commissioner Abbey is absent. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Farkas?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lagrequist?
Yes.
And Chair Comden?
Yes.
Six ayes and the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now, let's move on to the formal item, the Inclusionary Housing Program Ordinance.
Item number two?
Oh, I'm sorry. Approval of the Planning Commission hearing calendar for 2023. Yes. I'm not used to working off paper anymore. So, the hearing calendar, interestingly enough, shows that we're planning to have one Planning Commission meeting per month as opposed to the two, and that makes sense to me because we've had a lot of cancellations. So, has everyone reviewed that? Do we have any comments on the calendar for next year? Someone like to move to approve that?
Before we do, do we have any public comments on item number two?
Thank you. No public comment received on item number two.
Thank you.
I would move to approve the calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, very good. Would you please take the roll?
Okay, to approve item number two, Commissioner Abbey is absent. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Farkas?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lagrequist?
Yes.
And Chair Comden?
Yes, please.
Six ayes and the motion carries.
Very good. All right, now let's move on to the formal item. Inclusionary Housing Program Ordinance. There is no sta-, oh, staff is stepping up now.
Just as they set up, Planning Commission joined this evening with, by Leona Rollins, who's our Housing Services Manager, which I believe you all met a couple of months back as we did the homelessness plan update, as well as with Jenny Buckingham, who's our Senior Management Analyst in the Housing Services Division with Community Development. We are also joined virtually with our consultant team, and I'll let them introduce themselves when they come up to present as well, but just so you're aware of who's before you this evening.
Technology. Good evening.
Sorry, wants to join in the conversation.
Good evening. Are you ready to present?
Sure am, thank you.
Please do.
And good evening. As Neta said, I'm Jenny Buckingham. This is really loud. And I'm with the Housing Services Division, and as an introduction to tonight's discussion, it's a follow-up to the Planning Commission meeting on February 23rd of this year in which the commission considered a proposed Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to replace the 2018 ordinance called the Interim Inclusionary Housing Program. In the February 23rd meeting, the Planning Commission requested an evaluation of including low-income units in ownership housing program, projects, and very low-income units in rental projects. In response to that request, the Inclusionary Housing Financial Analysis was prepared by Kaiser Marston Associates, the consultant for the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance component of the overarching general plan update. Kathy Head, President of Kaiser Marston, is here tonight virtually to review the findings and the financial evaluation. Unless you have questions for staff, Ms. Head will proceed with her presentation. Thank you very much.
Are there questions at this time? All right. Please proceed.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can everybody hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, terrific. I think I'm on the wrong camera, but besides that, everything's great. So, are one of you in the room going to run the PowerPoint then, or am I going to share mine?
Yes, we've got the PowerPoint here up on the screen, so go ahead and let us know when you are ready to move to the next slide.
Okay, great. Will you move to the next slide, please? So I'm just briefly, what Jenny just went over, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. I just wanted to talk about the timeline from when we started this whole endeavor. So in May of 2018, the City Council adopted the Interim Inclusionary Housing Program, and then in September 2021, Kaiser Marston was engaged to provide an INLUFFI analysis for that program, the unified program that was being considered. And so that was the sole scope of what our original analysis in 2021 was, was to figure out what the INLUFFI component would be. And then that was also based on assumptions that were provided, which was that it would be based, the INLUFFI would be based on a 15% moderate income requirement for ownership projects and a 15% low-income requirement for apartment projects. Then, at a meeting held on February 9th, 2022, we presented our findings and participated in a lengthy discussion with the commission and various members of the public. And as a result of that meeting, there was a subsequent request for there to be a financial evaluation done of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance in general, so to look at the supportable inclusionary housing requirement. And so we then started on that mission, and as part of that, we were asked to look at ownership housing for both moderate income and low-income households, and rental housing for low-income and very low-income households, whereas before we'd only been looking at it from the moderate for ownership and the low for apartments. We could go to the next slide, please. So I just want to go over a few highlights of the standards that need to be considered when adopting, or in this case, updating, an Inclusionary Housing Program. And the basic legal standards, which have come out of the court cases for, that have preceded this throughout the state, are that Inclusionary Housing ordinances cannot be confiscatory, and they cannot deprive an owner or developer of a fair or reasonable return on their investment. As I'll mention again later, and then we can undoubtedly talk about some more, the courts didn't define what that means. So what we at Kaiser Marston have done, and all the work that we've been doing over the past 25 years or so, is just take a conservative approach to the analyses we do as a means of making sure that if coming under scrutiny, that the program will continue to hold up. The other thing to think about is that you want to balance your, the interests of the property owners and developers, because if they don't feel it's worthwhile to develop, then they won't develop in your community, against the obvious need, the public need, for affordable housing. No one's, no one's debating the issue that there is a substantial need for, unmet need for affordable housing in Ventura and in Southern California at large. But those are the key things that I look at when I, when I start these analyses and I consider, i- is that. So then what we do is we do, and we did in this case, a financial evaluation to evaluate these issues, and then what we take that evaluation to do is to help us formulate our recommendations for how the program's income and affordability standards should be set up. We give you those recommendations, and then it's just one piece of the puzzle. You have obviously other things to think about, other issues to think about, so, but my piece is just limited to that financial evaluation. If you go on the next slide, please. So what we did is we looked at, in our financial evaluation, as I mentioned before, the income and affordability standards that were requested by the Planning Commission were for ownership housing development, a moderate income requirement, and a low-income requirement. And for apartment development, we actually, in the report, but what we won't focus on a lot, what we will focus on is the low-income and the very low-income. We also ran, and it's in the report, some mix-and-match scenarios of 75% of the inclusionary units would be low-income and 25% would be very low-income, or 50% would be low, 50% would be very low, or 25% would be low and 75% would be very low. So those were, those are the analyses in the, in the full report, but in this PowerPoint, I'm focused on the low and the very low income. We could go to the next slide, please. So the steps of the financial evaluation, the way it's organized, is we start out by creating prototype development types, and what we use to do that is we use the housing element. We use plans that have been submitted to the planning department, and through our market survey, we look at the types of units that have been developed. And so then we create prototypes for both ownership units and for apartment units. We then take those prototypes and conduct a pro forma analysis for each of the prototype, and the first thing we do in that analysis is to do a 100% market rate project alternative. And that's to identify what the baseline developer return, profit from an ownership project, or ongoing return from an apartment project, that would be anticipated to be received by a market rate project, because basically, you're looking at two things when you do that. One, you're looking at how, how successful is residential development in the community right now, just forgetting that you have inclusion already, in a community, in a generic community, how successful market rate development is, and what kind of returns they're getting, because the whole idea, when you're looking at this type of financial analysis, is to identify the impact created by a new requirement. And so that's what this analysis does. We start with a market rate analysis, and then we do a marginal analysis of if we add an income restriction, and so we lower the rent or we lower the sales price for units, how does that impact the project economics? And so we keep adding until we get to a point where we think, and again, the courts haven't told us, you know, what confiscatory means, or what a fair and reasonable return is, but I've done 35 of these, and so, and they've been evolving over the, over the 20-plus years that I've been doing them, the analysis has been evolving to cover more and more issues associated with it, and so I'm comfortable with our methodology. But again, it is, there is some ambiguity in it because of the fact that, that we haven't been told exactly what is allowable and what isn't allowable. But what we really want to do, or at least my recommendation to you for what I think you want to do, is that the Housing and Community Development Department of the State of California, while they don't have a right, in your case, to come in and require you to do a financial evaluation for an inclusionary program, because you've met the two standards that they've established, that eliminate their potential for requiring a financial evaluation. However, HCD always has the right to come in and ask you to prove that what you're doing is not a constraint to housing. And so while that's not specifically written up in AB 1505, which is where the discussion of the financial evaluation is, I actually have worked in a number of cities where HCD has come just sort of out of the blue and made us prove up that our inclusionary program is not confiscatory. So, they have, they have an absolute right via AB 1505 to look at your rental component, but they actually always have the right, in their role as the housing element reviewers, to look at it for a constraint to housing. Next slide, please. And the next slide. So we looked at three types of ownership housing, and that was the same three types that we looked at when we did the INLUFFI analysis last year. And so what I did was I took those prototypes that we were using just for INLUFFI analyses, and I did financial evaluations of the supportable requirement. And I'll just briefly run over what those scenarios are. So we have a single-family home project that's just detached homes, low density, seven units the acre. The, and I, this is an updated analysis, by the way, so we did this in August. So we did all the market work over again in August that we'd started, we'd done the year before, and so a fair amount of this information has changed from when we talked to you last February to now, this is, now this is August market data, so it's now several months old, but it's newer than last year. So the detached, single-family home scenario, the average unit size is 2870, so 2,870 square feet. They range from, in the prototype, they range from three bedrooms to five bedrooms. The total development costs, including land acquisition, are estimated in that scenario at $1.13 million. The weighted average sales price of those units, 1.33 million, and the developer profit on that, from a market rate project with no restrictions, is a little over 11%. If you go then to the townhouse scenario, the density has increased to 15 units the acre. The unit sizes are one, the weighted average size is 1,790 square feet. The total development cost per unit is $709,000. The weighted average sales price is 865,400, and the developer profit on the townhomes is 15.3%. It's not unusual to have the return be higher on townhomes than detached, single-family homes, just because there's a different risk profile to them. The magnitude of this difference is fairly significant. When you look at the stacked flat condominium scenario, this is a downtown scenario at a density of 50 units the acre, with the average unit size of 1,120 square feet per unit, development costs of 532,000 dollars per unit, and then average sales prices of 606,000. When you look at that, the developer profit as a percentage of cost on that scenario is 7.7%. That is actually lower than we would anticipate for a developer be willing, to be willing to undertake the project, given the type of risk associated and the cost premiums associated with the parking types and the density, and then just a marketing risk as well. That is a lower-than-typical rate of return, so we're concerned about that, that prototype. It actually shows up again in the apartment development, just like it did in the INLUFFI, and it works a lot better. It works a lot better as an apartment development than it did as an ownership prototype. We could go to the next slide, please. So here we have the affordable sales prices. These are the affordable sales prices as of 2022. When we did the analysis in, in February 22, when we presented it to you, the 2022 incomes had not yet come out from HCD, so when we did this in August, they were out. The other thing that had happened between December, when we actually wrote the INLUFFI analysis, and August, when we wrote the financial evaluation, is, as I imagine you all know, interest rates went crazy. What we did to mitigate the impact of those interest rates, because we don't want to have a policy that's only good for August. We don't want to take into account that we've had this blip of dramatic interest rate increases over a very short period of time, and assume that that's going to go on forever. So what I did, when I did this analysis, when I updated the analysis, I actually took the Freddie Mac interest rates over the 12 preceding months, and then I took the, the average of those interest rates, and then I, and then I put a little bit of a, excuse me, put a little bit of a premium on them, just to, again, to be conservative. But I do think that that was a significant difference between what you saw in February and what you're seeing now. It's mitigated to some extent by the fact that Ventura County, the median income between 2021 and 2022 went up by 19%. So that, and this happens throughout Southern California, the Southern California counties. The, the median income increase was sort of off the charts, and so you have both higher interest rates but higher income, so they balance themselves off of it. So, the affordable prices, as you can see, and I think the most crucial thing, rather than me just reading all the numbers to you, is the reason the moderate income prices are so much higher than the low-income prices is twofold. One is, when calculating the affordable housing cost for moderate income units, if you're using the California Health and Safety Code as your measurement tool, they allow you to count 35% of income towards housing-related expenses. Using the same tool, they only allow you to use 30% of income for low-income units, and so that makes a significant difference. You're also measuring against 70% of the area median income for low versus 110% of the median income for moderate. But that's, that's the cause of the big differences between moderate and low. The other thing you may notice is that sometimes the larger number of bedrooms actually is generating a lower affordable price. And, and the reason for that, when that happens, is that the sales tax and the, and the HOA costs, or the cost to maintain the unit for the bigger units, has actually taken away enough of the income that there's actually less money left for, for mortgage. So that's why, when you see an example of the price going, the affordable price going down, it's mainly due to property taxes. We can go on to the next slide. So the results of the ownership analysis are presented in this table, and as you can see, the supportable inclusionary housing percentage is basically 9% to 10% when it, when it's categorized on moderate income. If you look at the two lines below that, which are developer profit as a percentage of cost, or, and/or, the market price increase required to offset the impact, so in other words, how much would market prices have to go up in order for the impact to be eliminated? And you'll see that, so both of those, the developer profit, what we're trying to do is, is keep that to less than, less than, well, we're trying to keep it within an acceptable range, and then on the market rate price, we're trying to keep it right around 5%. So you can see that it ranges, depending on the scenario, from 4.3% to 5.5. So then when you look at the low income, you'll see that those ratios are very similar on the, on the two lines below the supportable inclusionary housing percentage, and that's because, again, we're solving for not creating an impact that is confiscatory or depriving an owner of a fair and reasonable return. And so we're trying to use the same metric, and that's how we end up at a 6% supportable inclusionary housing requirement at low income. Next slide, please. So then what we did, as a part of this analysis, is we updated the INLUFFI payment analysis. We continued to use a 15% moderate income requirement for the INLUFFI, even though we can't support, in our financial analysis, a production requirement of 15%. And the reason it's okay to do that is because the INLUFFI is an option rather than a requirement. The fundamental requirement of an inclusionary program is the production of units. And so you can make an INLUFFI higher than what it would be to, to have produced those units, because then a developer's just made that choice that they'd rather spend the money than, than to produce the units. You've made the choice that you're willing to accept an INLUFFI, and under what you've decided to accept that INLUFFI. So if you, if you look at those INLUFFIs as they, as they fall out, you'll see that the detached, single-family home at a 15% requirement is $46.40, and then if you take it up to a 20% requirement, it's $66.30, and this is per square foot of saleable area. And the reason that I do it as a measurement of saleable area is because then it, it doesn't harm small units, and it provides more revenue for larger units, which tend to be more valuable. And so I've shown you all three measures, the INLUFFI per inclusionary unit, the INLUFFI per total unit, and the per-square-foot fee. I show that because different people understand it different ways, but in fact, if you were to do the multiplication of that fee on the project, it would work out exactly the same, no matter which of these methods you used. So then the townhome project, the affordability gaps are less, and so because the affordability gaps are less, you end up with a lower fee, and it ends up at 2980 and 4960. And then the stacked flat condominiums ends up at 3360 and 4480 per square foot of building, or saleable area. Next slide, please. And then next slide, please. So then, the same thing, we ran, and I ran two sets of numbers for the apartment prototypes. So the first set of numbers I ran for the apartment prototypes were against the base zoning, so based on the assumption that a developer didn't make use of the state density bonus. Now, in Ventura, you have form-based code zoning, so you don't actually have a density limit, but you can extrapolate to, to a way that developers would use density bonus. And in fact, you've had projects where developers have used the density bonus, and then to get the concessions and incentives, and so to get development standard waivers, et cetera, so it can be done, but it's, it's not as typical in an area that has actual zoning based on densities. densities. But so this set of scenarios is the base zoning alternatives. And we have different prototypes for these, because these are apartments rather than ownership units. And so we have a coastal area set of prototypes, we have an inland area set of prototypes, and then the downtown-specific-plan-area prototype. And you'll notice on the downtown-specific-plan-area prototype, it's exactly the same as the stacked flat condominium was in the ownership development. And so, and you'll see in this one that it actually works dramatically better on the market rate than the condominium did in the ownership. That may not always be true, that probably won't always be true, but it's been true for the last couple of years. On the coastal-area scenario, what we have is we have an average unit size of 890 square feet. We have total development cost of $584,000 a unit, which is higher than the other two scenarios, and that's large, and while they're smaller units, excuse me, largely because of difference in land cost for that area. But you'll also see then that the weighted average rent per unit is also significantly higher than the weighted average rents for the other two scenarios. It generates a 6% stabilized return on total investment, which is completely different than profit on an ownership project, because this comes every year, and it should grow every year. It should grow over time, even if it doesn't grow every year. And so instead of getting a one-time profit, you have a return that generates year after year. And so it's a completely different measurement and needs to be thought of differently than in an ownership profit situation. In the inland area, as I mentioned, we have lower cost to build, we have lower rents, and we generate approximately the same stabilized return on total of investment. This is, again, for 100% market-rate project. And then the following scenario, the last scenario, is the downtown-specific plan. So it's the highest density of the three, at 50 units the acre. The unit sizes are about the same as in the inland empire, excuse me, inland area, a little bit bigger. The costs are less than coastal, but higher than inland, and that's mainly because of parking. And the rents are actually higher than the rents that were demonstrated in the inland area. And it generates a 6.1% return. So those three scenarios generate, even though all their economics are different, they generate a very similar return on investment. If we could go to the next slide, please. So the affordable rents don't vary among the three scenarios. So the affordable rents, they're based on the number of bedrooms, they're based on a percentage of area median income. For the low income, they're based on 80% of area median income. That's an AB 1505 standard that was, so we used it. And the very low-income rents are based on 50% of area median income. They're based on benchmark household sizes, they're based on 30% of income being spent on housing expenses. So as you can see, the low-income rents range from $1798 to $2230, and the very low-income rents range from $1,106 to $1,356. So there's a significant difference, and that's caused by 80% of area median versus 50% of area median income. We can move on to the next slide, please. So based on the costs and the revenues and the returns that we discussed, and based on the affordable rents that I just identified, I then estimated what the supportable inclusionary housing requirement would be. And so I have it for low income, and I have it for very low income. On the low-income standard, it was 9% for the coastal area. That's because of the larger affordability gaps, so it's a lower percentage that can be supported while maintaining economic stability. In the inland empire and in the downtown, they were 12% and 11% respectively. As you can see on the table, the stabilized return on investment is very, very similar among the three scenarios. It's 5.6, 5.6, and 5.8. Similarly, if you look at the market rent increase required to offset the impact, it's in the low fives. And so in those cases, then, that's how we came to the conclusion of 9, 12, and 11. Using exactly the same methodology, but applying the very low-income rents, the supportable inclusionary requirement is 7% to 8%. And again, the stabilized return on investment is exactly the same as it was in the low-income, and the market rent increase is approximately the same as well. And so, again, that's the whole point. The point is, the variable is the supportable inclusionary percentage. We're trying to get to very similar other metrics in doing that. Next slide, please. So then, the last scenario that I ran on rental, as I mentioned, is I ran the scenario based on, using the state density bonus, the Section 65915 density bonus. And what that does is it not only allows increased density or greater number of units, it also allows, depending on how much affordable housing you provide, between one and three incentives and concessions, and as many development standards relief measures as you need to meet the density that is allowed by Section 65915. So it can be a very valuable tool, and it's very commonly used when inclusionary housing ordinances are being implemented, because it does mitigate the impact of the affordability requirement imposed by inclusionary housing. So based on an NAPA case, any unit that's developed under an inclusionary policy that has, and a density bonus, so you have a density bonus affordable, you have an inclusionary affordable, as long as you take the stricter of the two standards, so as long as a developer takes a stricter of the two standards, then you, the city, have to recognize the affordable unit as counting for both your inclusionary requirement and the state density bonus affordable requirement. And so when you have an inclusionary policy, then, when it can be efficient for a developer to use it, so when the site's efficient, then they will make use of the density bonus to get these concessions, to get the parking relief provided by the density bonus, in order to mitigate the affordable requirement that was imposed by inclusionary. So that's a byproduct of having an inclusionary program, is that it is likely that you'll see more density bonus projects. Not all sites can efficiently use it, not all sites are well-set up. Once you get into different construction types or different parking configurations, it can actually, the increased development cost can exceed the benefits created by the additional, the additional number of units. So that's why I don't like to base everything on everybody's going to use density bonus. So I don't like to make conclusions based on that assumption, that everybody's going to use density bonus. But I do recognize that a lot of developers will use density bonus, and so that does help support a higher percentage. But also, as I just said, because of the NAPA case, you're going to have situations where it makes more sense for a developer to produce very low-income units for the density bonus purposes, and then, and fulfill your, say, low-income requirement, because as long as it's stricter, you have to double-count them. And so even though I'm recommending ultimately a low-income requirement, I believe that a fair amount of apartment development that occurs will actually choose to use the density bonus, and will actually choose to provide very low-income units. But when I ran the three scenarios with the 15% very-low-income affordability, they all worked. If we could go to the next slide, please. And so then again, I updated the In-Lu fee analysis, again, using a 15% low-income requirement, which was what was in the previous report, the In-Lu fee report, and just updated them for the new affordability gaps, and kept it at 15% low income. And so as you can see, the fees range from $20.30 a square foot to $48.90 a square foot. And then I believe I have just one more slide. So my recommendations for you to consider are to set the ownership housing requirement at a 10% moderate income level, and the apartment development requirement at 15% low income. And the reasons that I've suggested these percentages, and I know they're lower than the percentages that are in your existing interim ordinance, is, once again, the courts have not told us what is confiscatory and what a reasonable return is. I like to use, in my work to protect my clients, I like to use a conservative approach, so that not only will your ordinance stand up to scrutiny, but so that folks will continue to develop. So I really do, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, I think it's important to balance the goal of getting as much affordable housing as you can get against the ability or the desire of developers to then build in the community. And so I think a conservative approach, personally, I think it serves you better to get a 10% moderate and a 15% low than a deeper affordability and less development. So that's part of the reasoning in my conclusions and recommendations. And then the recommendations, I think, are supported by my financial evaluation. And that's that, and I know it's a lot, so, and I know I talk really fast. But that's it.
Thank you, Kathy. A lot of work done there, a lot of statistical information for us to consider. Do we have questions for her at this time? Please, Commissioner McCarthy.
Hi, Ms. Head. Thank you for your analysis. This is Scott McCarthy. So in looking at your In-Lu fee analysis done in September of 2021 versus the one done this year, almost a year later, the In-Lu fees per square foot of saleable area for single-family homes, townhomes, stacked flat condominiums, all increased on the order of 50% to 60% from your previous analysis.
Right.
On the other hand, for the apartments, for coastal, inland, and the specific-plan locations, those all decreased on the order of 20% to 40%. So part of what I'm understanding is, part of what's driving the In-Lu fee payments for the housing development is, you mentioned that the median, well, median income is up by 19%, but your assumptions have changed with regard to market-rate sales prices, and they've gone up 20% to 30% over the course of 11 months. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's right. And so what I do, when I look at that, is I go through and I do a research on all the resales of homes, and in this case, I did 18 months of resales of homes in the community. And so it is very much driven by what's happened. In this case, it was 18 months. Normally, I use 12 months, but because I'd done it before, I wanted to wrap them all in. And that is, the single-family home particularly are dramatically higher.
So what, why would we expect things not to change over the next 11 months, and the projected In-Lu fees to go up another 50%?
Or down.
Okay, so you're taking a snapshot in time. Okay, so one of the risks with your, if we accept the results of your analysis, is it's a snapshot in time. So we are, we would be incorporating into our ordinance results based on this particular time period?
Exactly. And I think that, and that's, it's an excellent point, and it's one of the reasons why I recommend, especially as markets are changing, that, well, A, I always recommend that you take a conservative approach, but B, the other thing that I recommend is, as economics are changing, and obviously this year with both, you know, the interest rate increase and the change in median income, which were both unusual, is, I tried to mitigate that in my analysis, to some extent, but to the, I'll use my example, I think I used it the last time we spoke as well, is we did the Claremont inclusionary work in 2007. Well, we did not foresee the global recession that occurred almost immediately after. And so what happened was, basically, development stopped. It just stopped everywhere, not just Claremont. And so then what we did, and what the city did, was we went back in a couple of years later and revamped the whole program. And I think in times where things are changing dramatically, it is important to keep an eye on what's happening and change as necessary. So I don't think you can ever look at this as something that now forever it should be this, because I think economics change both up and down.
Okay.
Commissioner McCarthy, do you mind if I jump in and answer part of that question, too? The inclusionary housing ordinance as it's drafted for adoption in the In-Lu section, which is Section 25.20.090, it does state in Item 2 that the In-Lu fee shall be paid according to a fee schedule adopted by council and adjusted annually based on adjustments in pricing. So then annually, we would take a look, and if there is fluctuations in home or rental prices, that we would adjust those and adopt a new fee schedule for the In-Lu fee program.
Okay. I have a question about that point, which I can make sometime later. So one more question, Ms. Head, about your, the changes in assumptions to your analysis. I noticed, again, for the ownership housing development analysis, the distribution, the assumption of distribution of three, four, and five-bedroom units, and for both single-family homes and townhomes, changed not insignificantly.
Correct.
Simply based on more recent data?
That's correct.
Okay. So curiously, in your, well, no, okay, that answers that question. So that's just another variable that will change year over year, that has to be taken into account when these In-Lu fee analyses are recalculated.
Right. And I will tell you, and this, it becomes an issue in cities or jurisdictions where there's not a lot of development going on, because ideally, and ideally almost never happens, but ideally, you have new home development, as opposed to having to focus on resale development. You have a, you know, in some places, you have just a significant amount of new home development. Then you know what developers are building now, and that's the whole idea of inclusionary, is you're trying to, your prototypes are trying to be as close to what developers are going to build as possible, which is why, you know, I'm using plans the cities received, I'm using the housing element, et cetera, for that measure. And Ventura's not alone in this, but having to use resale data is not as great as having new home sales data.
Okay. So hypothetical question, which is kind of actually a paraphrase of the question I was referring to that I'm going to ask later. When you do analyses for cities such as this, and they implement your suggestions, and they write into their ordinances that the fees will be reviewed on a yearly basis, do they typically come back to you on a yearly basis, or is there expertise within the cities themselves to perform these pro forma analyses?
So what I'll, there was actually, there's an easy answer to this, because this is, I recommend it everywhere, and then it's something I do for free, is the Real Estate Research Council, every year puts out the average home, new home price by county in the state of California. And so my recommendation for In-Lu fees in the annual adjustment is to take the percentage change from one year to the next, be it up or down, and to adjust the fee by that percentage. It takes 15 minutes to do it. And then every, you know, five years or so, do a new analysis to see what your specific Ventura characteristics are. But I think it's a good, it's a good surrogate, and it's easy.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I figured my camera out finally, so that was good.
Commissioners, any other questions? I do have a question. You had mentioned that you recommend that we take a conservative approach. Can you explain that a little bit for us, please?
Sure. I mean, the key idea from my perspective, well, two key ideas. One is, from a city's perspective, when you're trying to create the opportunities for affordable housing to be developed, you're asking in an inclusionary program for the private market to help you do that. It's important, when you're doing that, to have your private development market want to continue developing in your community. So you don't want to, in other words, create such an impediment or such a cost impact to... to them that it's no longer going to generate them profit, because if they don't make profit, they're not going to build. So that's one reason to be conservative. Another reason is, is exactly the discussion I was just having, is these numbers fluctuate over time. And so if we go, for example, as we sit right now, we're sitting in an interest rate environment where it's very difficult to sell a house. And so you're going to see the development market be slowed down for a bit while that happens. And so if you have a policy that's too stringent, it just puts you a little farther behind the eight ball. The second is, and I say this, I don't know firmly, I guess, I can't think of another word, is I really have worked in cities where HCD has come and said, you've got to prove this doesn't work. I'm working in a city right now where HCD says, you've got to show us how the combination of your development standards, your inclusionary standards, and your development impact fees are not an impediment to development.
Could you, could I ask that the slide, page 11, be put up, the developer profit model? And can you comment, please, on these numbers? It looks to me that the developer profit as a percentage of cost, 5.2, 9.8, 3.3, and this is, okay, so this is after the inclusion of moderate and low-income housing has been, perhaps it was page 14.
I was going to say, because 11 is the title page. 14 is the pro forma analysis for the apartments. Is that where you are?
ROI, yeah. Can you comment on the stabilized return on investment? Are these numbers historically in this range, mid-single-digit?
They have been for the last 10 or so years, as cap rates have been so low. And so if you'd like me to explain that further, I will.
Yes, please.
I will, even if you don't ask, I suppose. So a cap rate is one way of measuring value of a project. And that is to say, if you divide the income generated, net income after you paid your operating expenses, and you know what your sales price was, so if you divide your income by your sales price, that's your cap rate. All right? And so you can flip those variables any way you want. So if you know the cap rate and you know the price, then you know what the income was, and every way around that. So there's nothing magic about a cap rate, it's just one way that it's measured. Well, cap rates have been in the high threes to the, you know, 4.5%, 5% for the last 10-plus years. So cap rates have been very low. And so the way you measure what a developer would want in an apartment is, it's the cap rate plus. And that's usually, in a higher cap rate environment, it's usually about 1%, 1.5%. But when you're starting with a 3.5% or a 4% cap rate, then that profit level isn't, that margin gets smaller. And the whole idea, then, is what you're really looking at is cap rate plus a 12% or 15% return of profit. And you combine that, and you get to, 5 is the low end of fine.
Right. Yeah, I also wanted to point out here, well, you know, there is, clearly, the idea here is, how can we get units built for affordability purposes and still have green-lighted projects in the community? I just wanted to mention here, this weighted average rent, 4,200 for less than 900 square feet. That's quite interesting. This is all based in, the terms coastal, inland, and downtown specific are all Ventura. Inland isn't.
Correct.
Out of the city, right.
That is correct.
Very good. All right.
And our survey, our market survey, was all on three and four-plus stars apartment projects.
Okay, very good. Commissioner McCarthy.
Ms. Head, I have a follow-up question. I heard you say something which caught my attention, but I think is extremely important. You mentioned that HCD may very well ask any given city to prove that its policies and ordinances are not an impediment to development, correct?
Yes.
So that would be trying to prove a negative, which is well-nigh impossible. Would you also agree with that?
Well, I guess I would, I understand it's proving a negative, so that is impossible. The manner in which this has been broached in the cities where I've been asked to help with it has been directly related to inclusionary policies. HCD is a little bit schizophrenic on how they feel about inclusionary policies, so one day they like them, one day they don't like them. And also, so like, when you do your housing element, which you've just done, is when you've done your housing element, they'll look at whether you're including inclusionary, and they'll both give you merits and demerits for it, because if it's too much, though, they absolutely won't count the units. They won't count them as real in your housing element. They'll say, that's great that you have that, but we're not counting those units towards your RENA. But on the other hand, as well, if your community looks like, you know, they're not trying to encourage development, so that they're in manners of development standards, or impact fees, or inclusionary policies, or a combination thereof, trying to implicitly constrain development, mainly their tool is to say, then, your housing element's out of compliance, but, you know, if your housing element's been certified, you're good for years. But they came into a city of mine in LA County, just in the middle of a housing element cycle, and made us demonstrate that housing was still being built at a normal clip with the inclusionary policy in place.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any other questions at this time? Is there further presentation from staff?
If I could, Chair Comden, Planning Commission, just point one piece out, too, that may also help. The city is still going through the certification process of our housing element, so HCD is actively reviewing our housing element right now. So though our housing element was adopted by City Council in January, we're going through the process of going back and forth with HCD on certification, so they will be actively asking these types of questions.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry, is there further presentation from staff? There is not. All right. Well, then, we will move to public comment. Michael, do we have speakers tonight?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have eight speaker cards currently.
Okay, very good. I will open the public hearing, and let's hear from the public, please.
Our first speaker this evening is Carl Morehouse. Carl will be followed by Matt Bello.
Chair and Commission, first is a point of personal privilege. Will all of you learn to speak into your microphones? Many of you are not used to using them, and some of us are losing our hearing, and when I'm at home, even, listening in. So speak into your microphone, it's very beneficial. I'm here tonight only because I'm here in support of the efforts on the inclusionary housing ordinance. This is something, when I sat up there, we wrestled with for a long time. As you know, we lost the opportunity to do that downtown with the redevelopment agency disappearing. And then, on top of insult to injury, when we were moving forward, we had to wait for the court cases to be resolved. I know you wrestle with a lot of things up here. You keep in mind that you're an advisory committee to the council, will make the final decision, and we, as the chair pointed out, we have a new council, we will have new staff, there's a lot of new stuff going on. But this has been a process that's been going on that's much needed, because we missed so many opportunities already with housing that's going up, that we didn't have opportunities to snatch onto with an inclusionary ordinance. And while it may not be perfect, remember that the perfect is the enemy of the good, we've got to move forward and get something on the books to start capturing the opportunity. There may be other changes that come down the line. Ordinances are not chiseled in stone. Again, they can be modified, repealed, replaced later down the line by further councils. So as you're taking into consideration tonight, how to deal with this, I think your analysis that Kaiza Marston gave you was very interesting, very thorough. Based on my past experience, I think it was pretty on point. And again, she was using conservative estimates, so I think you should take that under advisement. But again, I'm here in support, and I know there are a number of others people who want to speak in support of the IHO as well. So I wish you luck with this, and we'll see where it goes forward in terms of your deliberations and what you want to give to the council to adopt eventually. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morehouse.
Next speaker is Matt Bello, followed by Deborah Schreber.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm here to talk about the inclusionary housing ordinance. I personally think right now, our existing inclusionary housing ordinance is pretty strong. It's a sequential inclusionary housing ordinance, and then after 59 units, you do have the option of going to 20% for moderate income, or 10% for very low income. The reason that you guys are seeing this, from what I've seen in city council meetings, is that due to the need for the Palmer fix, you know, we are looking to add rentals on to this, as you all know. Unfortunately, I think a lot of the analysis that we're seeing here isn't taking into context the development that's been happening here in Ventura, as well as in our neighboring counties. In your February discussions, Agora came up, as well as Galida as well, and I'm not seeing any concrete analysis of those inclusionary housing ordinances and what's actually, why those wouldn't work in Ventura as well. I think that they're very strong, and I think they should be looked at. Especially here in Ventura, it's strange, we actually have a higher AMI in Ventura County and a lower property values in Ventura County. So if anything, we should be able to have more aggressive inclusionary housing ordinance, more aggressive inclusionary housing ordinance, from my understanding. Additionally, something I'm confused on is, we recently did approve the Haley Point development, and that is 20% of moderate inclusionary housing. So if that is a recent development that we did approve, and we were able to make the numbers work for 20%, why isn't this addressed in the report? It's just a question, maybe I'm missing something, but if that could be addressed. Additionally, regarding covenant limits, I'm sorry for the late email, I didn't realize that this was coming to the Planning Commission, but I did talk about a book that I recently read called Affordable City by Shane Phillips, and he talked about how a lot of cities are actually getting away from covenant limits, and that a lot of the historical critiques of these are not actually valid. And he did share some, he did share some, some, excuse me, some studies on that, which I shared with you on my email. So I know Commissioner McCarthy was asking about that in February, and I think he had some valid points, but I think that there are at least 10 examples in the report that we received for this meeting, showing that there are perpetual covenants in about 10 cities. So I think it'd be good to ask why we can't do a perpetual covenant in Ventura as well. So with that said, that was a lot of information, but thank you for your time, and good luck with this.
Thank you, Mr. Bello.
Our next speaker is Deborah Schreber, followed by Karen Flock.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Schreber. I'm a volunteer and a supporter of affordable housing, and I come here tonight to support the points brought out by the Social Service Task Force and Homes for All. I know you've gotten those primarily, that we need to act now and not delay any further with studies or other things, that in-lu housing, in-lu fees are beneficial and we need them, and that seven units should be a trigger point for affordable housing, or for inclusionary housing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schreber.
Our next speaker is Karen Flock, followed by Judy Alexander.
Good evening, Chair Comden and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Karen Flock. I'm the Deputy Director for Real Estate Development with the Housing Authority of the City of San Bueno Ventura, and I'm speaking on behalf of the authority. This has been a long time coming, and I urge you to recommend tonight that the City Council adopt the inclusionary housing program ordinance. This is an important part of the city's strategy to address our affordable housing crisis, and it's only a part. Because it's just a piece of the puzzle, we urge you to make it a strong ordinance and to consider other carrots that may be available along with the stick. So basically, I'm urging you not to be so conservative, and that for rental housing, the requirement be 15% very low income. This is the area of greatest need. We believe that it is feasible, and the consultant's report touches on how state density bonus law helps make it feasible. And for for-sale housing, the requirement should be 15% low income or 20% moderate income. This is consistent with the current ordinance, and for-sale projects have been built under this ordinance. As proof of that, during the last housing element period, more than the RENA goal for above-moderate income housing was built. And as Matt mentioned, recently, in my neighborhood, the Haley Point project was not only approved, but it's under construction, and it includes 20% moderate income homes. When developers know what the inclusionary requirements are, they will factor this into what they're willing to pay for land. So it's also appropriate to maybe look at some additional carrots. This is my idea, but collection of impact fees could be deferred to certificate of occupancy. This would help developers with their interest costs, which are only going up, and not make any changes to projects or to the funds ultimately collected. Additionally, this inclusionary housing ordinance is an important tool to help meet the need to affirmatively further fair housing. And I also just want to mention, kind of as a side note, that the Housing Authority is currently leasing up 104 affordable apartments at Westview Village on the west side, including 21 apartments for homeless families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flock.
Next speaker is Judy Alexander. Judy will be followed by Maria Navarro.
Good evening. I'm Judy Alexander, and I'm a longtime, 50-plus-year resident of the City of Ventura and chair of the Ventura Social Services Task Force. And in that position, we have spent, along with Homes for All, studying a variety of cities and what different cities are doing, including our local neighbor, Oxnard, in looking at inclusionary housing. And so though we all totally appreciate all the staff, the time that's been put into it, and their work, we are advocating for the strongest possible inclusionary housing that is possible, that we can have, for a variety of reasons. One, it will increase inclusivity and decrease segregation in our city. That is essential. Second, it will allow for there to be people to associate with one another. It will allow for people to be housed in rates that they could afford. I was shocked when I learned that I could earn over $100,000 and qualify for affordable housing. The majority of our workers in this city do not earn near that amount, and they need to have decent, high-quality homes to live in. So Homes for All and VSTF are strong advocates for having 15% very low-income housing as a part of the ordinance, 15% low or 20% moderate in for-sale projects. We are aware that housing has been built at that rate. We are also aware that we have missed so many opportunities because of the eight-to-10-year process from the city's first stakeholder meeting regarding inclusionary housing to this point of bringing it to you today. So I am encouraging you to support the strongest possible inclusionary plan that you can have. I'm asking that we have a strong in-lu fee, so that for those developers who choose not to do the affordable housing, will have sufficient funds that will allow other developers to access funds to build the affordable housing that is necessary. The City of Oxnard has asked to go from 10 units to six units. We are asking to go to seven. We strongly, I strongly encourage you to consider all options and to make the strongest possible recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Our next speaker is Maria Navarro. Maria, we're going to bring you over now, and you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. So hello, everyone. I'm Maria Navarro, a senior policy advocate of cause, and thank you so much for taking my comments. I wish I could be there, but just to echo Judy's comments, I also stand in support of the VSTF and Homes for All letter, and urge you, Planning Commission, to lower the affordability levels for the city's proposed inclusionary housing ordinance. And I just want to kind of echo a little bit of what was in the letter about the fifth element housing cycle. I actually looked at the RENA, the HCD's annual progress reports, and looked at, in the fifth cycle, 169.3%, we actually met the above-moderate RENA requirements by 169.3%, which is more than 2,500 units that were permitted. But we- But we failed to meet the affordable housing requirements by a lot, you know. We permitted 12.2% of moderate income housing, 20.1% of low income, and 25.3% of very low income housing. And so that's a total, and all of that was a total of 419 units that were permitted. You know, it, it makes sense to me, looking at those numbers of what happened, that the 15% low-income requirement, 20% moderate income requirement for for-sale projects, it's adopted, just because we just built so little of it. For the, for for-rent category, 15% very low income also makes sense, because as Karen mentioned, we also have a, a, a percentage, a very high percentage of our renters in this county are cost burdened. So according to the California Housing Partnership's 2020 Ventura Housing Report, 88% of renters in the county are rent burdened, and 57% are extremely rent burdened. I mean, it, it's just hard to overemphasize just how much is needed and how much is required right now to, to help people in this income category. I would like to also point out, kind of like what Matt Bello was saying, that the City of Galita has an affordability level of more than 15%, and the City of Oxnard is looking for a 15% inclusionary requirement as well. And I, I finally want to say, I appreciate, you know, Ms. Head talking about the state laws, and I was just wondering, you know, how AB 2011 is going to influence all of this as well. And yeah, and just want to echo Karen's comments as well about incentives and the carrots that we could actually add to make, to alleviate these development costs and make up as well. And I do want to finally echo Matt Bello's comments on the affordability comments, covenant, sorry. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jackson Piper, Jackson will be followed by Sonia Flores. Jackson, we're bringing you over now.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro.
My apologies.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you, my name is Jackson Piper, I am with Ventura County IMB, I'm not a Ventura resident, but I am a resident in Thousand Oaks, and I frequent Ventura fairly often. I'm speaking as a member of that group, a resident of Ventura County, who is interested in seeing us address, as a, as a whole society, the housing concerns that really affect all of us, that are not just limited to within the City of Ventura, within the City of Thousand Oaks, or within Ventura County alone. I thought that Ms. Head did a very thorough analysis of the problem, and of the potential for inclusionary housing in different types of projects. However, I have to hope that at some point soon, the market will not be going so crazy as it has recently, and there will be some capability to build new projects that are going to be more affordable than they realistically are right now, for developers and, you know, and builders. I think in this case, we really need to, I appreciate being conservative, but I think in this case, we should try and aspire to the 15% very low income for rental, and either 15% low income or 20% moderate income for for-sale. Because really, cutting down those numbers even further, you know, eventually, we're going to keep cutting it down to the point where we're not really getting much inclusionary housing anyway, and then it's just going to be all market rate, which there's definitely a need for, but it doesn't, it's sort of a self-defeating action. We need to find a balance point between projects being viable, and housing being built for the people that otherwise wouldn't be able to afford it in this county. So please do that, please proceed without stalling the process by, you know, conducting further studies, maybe move forward with the inclusionary ordinance, and then conduct studies afterwards to see if it's working or not, and then adjust it as needed. Also include a strong in-lu fee, so that developers don't have an easy out of saying, oh, I'll just pay a small amount of money instead of building these affordable units. The in-lu fee can be adjusted in time, as a Thousand Oaks resident, I have seen that happen before unfortunately, and would not like to see it happen unless it's a dire situation where development is not happening, but it is an option. So please, please go forward with this, and give us as much housing as possible, affordable to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper.
Our next speaker is Sonia Flores, Sonia will be followed by Trevor Gottman, and I'm bringing Sonia over now. Sonia, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission members, my name is Sonia Flores, and I'm here today on behalf of Homes for All, and also as a resident of the City of Ventura. The city's staff's proposed inclusionary housing requirements within the proposed ordinance are as follows: for rental, it's 15% low income, and for for-sale, it's 10% moderate income. The Homes for All and Ventura Social Services Task Force continues to advocate for the following percentage of affordable housing to be included within the inclusionary housing update. For rental, we're asking for 15% very low income, for for-sale, we're asking for 15% low income or 20% moderate income. Just for example, the City of Galita approved an inclusionary housing ordinance in 2019 that included a very low income percentage requirement in new rental housing projects, and they did no economic analysis. Their staff report says that AB 1505 allows cities to acquire up to 15% low and very low income rentals without triggering an economic feasibility analysis. Also, the City of Oxnard is now proposing updates to its inclusionary housing ordinance, and their staff report of November 2022 contains no fiscal analysis. The City of Oxnard staff is recommending increasing their inclusionary requirement from 10% to 15%. And concerning the for-sale portion of the inclusionary housing ordinance, if adopted, the recommendation of City of Ventura staff would weaken the current ordinance. The current ordinance was passed in 2006, and allows a 20% moderate income requirement for for-sale projects. Since that time, many hous, I'm sorry, oh, since that time, many housing projects were built that clearly penciled out for the developers, while developing units affordable to low and moderate income residents. We do not want the city to move backwards in this update of the inclusionary housing ordinance. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Our next and final speaker is Trevor Gottman. Trevor, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Commissioners, city staff, community members, thank you. Cole Morehouse started this public communication, and I urge you to take, be encouraged, to be brave. Judy Alexander pointed out very succinctly how important it is to house the very low income. We've got a tremendous housing problem with homeless people as well, and the important thing is to encourage the private and the public to interface much more smoothly, and open up paths, open up opportunities, and I still feel that, you know, borders between properties should be, we should be building community gardens and extending things beyond what we're talking about tonight. So these are my visions, that I would keep, you know, working with parks and work in the community and the city and everybody involved, because we're all here picking up after each other, and creating this wonderful community that we live in, that we want to maintain, and so we have to look forward, as well as we look back, and see, and include everybody and everything, and pick up, because we've got a lot of picking up to do, and use those that are willing, that have come to these meetings, and extend our reach out. But as I said, it takes this hard work, it takes the courage, so I just wanted to speak tonight to encourage you to, to be brave, and know that you've got support throughout this community. Thank you very, very much, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Gottman.
That concludes our speakers on item number three.
Very good, thank you. With that, I'll close the public meeting, and bring it back to the Commission for deliberation, discussion. Who would like to start? Commissioner Farkas.
I have a couple questions. So, do we know what the cost of the Kaiser Martin study was for this additional study that was just done?
Thank you, Commissioner Farkas, I don't have all the invoices collected, Kathy, Kathy, do you have an approximate?
Yeah, yeah, it'll take me a second to get there, so maybe we'll just move on, and I'll come back to you, but I can find it.
And on that, so in February, we originally approved 15% for rentals and on low, and 15% for sale on moderate. And then going back and looking at everything, it came back with a 15% rental and a 10% for sale. And I just wanted to see, you know, we went backwards on it, at a, probably a significant cost to the city, and so that's why I'm a little frustrated with this process, that's why I voted no the last time to go back and do this, I thought what we had approved the last time was, was pretty good. Does anybody know how many units have been built in Galita? Because I know a couple of the public comments have come up, and says that they've got this, this great ordinance, but are they actually building homes there? Are they building very low?
I have, I have answers, if I can, something, this is Kathy, because actually, in response to the correspondence that was written, I actually did some research and, on the various ordinances, and, and a comment was made in, in an email, that I hadn't included those cities in my survey, which is correct, I hadn't included Galita and Agoura Hills, not in any malevolent fashion, I just hadn't, I've subsequently, in, in my survey, which I keep updating, I've included them. But anyway, so I've researched the, the two cities, and in Agoura Hills, there hasn't been an inclusionary housing unit built since 2013. They are in the midst now of revamping as part of their housing element process, their inclusionary, to add some carrots, as was mentioned by a number of the speakers, so to add some incentives for developers to want to, to produce the affordable units. And so they're, they're looking at, I've got too many things up at once. And then in Galita, the situation is, there are three projects that have been on the books for the last year or so, two of them have been stalled by water issues, and then one of them is a project that appears to be a joint project between the Santa Barbara Housing Authority, Santa Barbara County Housing Authority, and a private developer, that includes a large affordable component and a large market rate component. The last hearing on that project was last April, so I don't know where that project stands. But I think that the question is appropriate, because a number of cities, I think well-meaning, have very strict requirements, they're not necessarily panning out to getting those units constructed. And just to mention too, on the Ventura project, that's mentioned a number of times, that it was built with 20% moderate, that's also a Section 65915 density bonus project, and I think it's really important to, to say, that when you do inclusionary, as I said in my presentation, when you do inclusionary, you can expect density bonus to be used, and you can also expect to get stricter, stricter income and affordability standards, and then are, then are required by your inclusionary, by the fact that it just makes sense for a developer to fulfill on a rental project, the very low income. So I, I just think that's something important to, to keep in mind as you look at this. The budget, back to this project, the new analysis, the budget was $24,000, I don't think we spent it all.
Okay, thank you very much for that. A lot of, you know, the housing costs and what we're dealing with constantly is supply and demand, and I think it's important to be able to not constrain builders to build. I think we need to encourage them, and like they've said, you know, having the density bonuses, and, and getting people to actually build homes will be helpful, and I think we all really would love to see these lower numbers put into the ordinance, I'm, you know, on a, on a personal level. If the numbers don't work, the numbers don't work, and I think we've kind of looked at that, and looked at that, and like I said, I was, I was a little frustrated when, you know, the city's gone out and, you know, spent another 20K to look at things, and the numbers came back worse. So I, I think that's something that, that could potentially continue to happen, so I was very happy with what we originally approved, and that's where I am at right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Yes, Commissioner Zucker.
Before we get started, I wanted to, to share just a disclosure that my, my day job, my organization I work for, CAWS, you know, has taken a position in, in support of the Homes for All letter that, that you all received, and, you know, City's Attorney's Office shared that, you know, it wasn't a conflict of interest, but, yeah, but just wanted to disclose that. I, I want to talk about the reasons that I think it's worth, you know, pushing for a little bit deeper levels of affordability, and, and, you know, why it's kind of been worth it, I think, to, you know, go down this road, and, you know. Yeah, I, I, you know, initially kind of wanted to push it forward to, to City Council, but with, with a higher level of affordability, you know, but I think it's, it's valuable, we got, got some additional information. I, I do think there's, you know, some, some limits to that information, and I'll, I'll share about that in a bit, but I think one of the things that, that that snapshot shows is, is just how bad the situation is right now. You know, looking at these charts that, that show $3,000, $4,000, you know, for, for a one-bedroom apartment, right, you know, over a million dollars for, for a single-family home in our, in our community is, is just, it's, it's really astonishing and really devastating, and, and, you know, I, I think it shows what a lot of our community is struggling with, the reasons that we've seen, you know, rates of homelessness skyrocket in our community, you know, and even when we talk about allocating 15% to low income, just on the rental side, right, you know, the, I don't know if people know, and it wasn't in the, in the presentation or anything, what the threshold for low income is in Ventura County, but it's over $100,000 a year. So the 15% of people, you know, low income are, are folks, those are, for, for a family of four, that, that's making six figures, right? Very low income is about $62,000, $63,000, right? And currently, we have zero for that, for, for all the families under, under 60-plus thousand dollars a year, you know, and those are the folks that are most at risk of going into homelessness, most at risk of, of leaving a community. So I, I think that's big picture, you know, why, you know, I've been interested in trying to see, particularly if we can get some very low units, you know, I think there's a lot of those, those families that are, that are really struggling, and, and I think, you know, we need to do more, you know, as, as, you know, was, was shared, we're, we're actually doing more than, than, you know, we're being asked by the state to hit our, our above moderate income RENA numbers, so we're building, you know, we're hitting our goals and surpassing our goals for market rate, we're not hitting our goals or even close for affordable housing. And that's, that's where I'd like to focus, you know, I, I appreciate the models that are used in the study, you know, but you study economics, and they'll, they teach you, models are powerful, and are important to, to see, but models depend on assumptions, right? And, and they're, they're not perfect, you know, we had models that said if California raised the minimum wage to, you know, $15 an hour, there would be mass unemployment, didn't happen, right? You know, and I think as, as we've seen in the discussion, models can sometimes be based on assumptions and inputs that are somewhat arbitrary, right? There's been a lot of fluctuation, we're, we're in an incredibly wacky housing market right now, with, between COVID, inflation, interest rates, and you can choose a cutoff point of, you know, go to the last 12 months, last 18 months, you know, last six months, but you're ultimately kind of making a judgment call. And so I just want to, you know, share that's useful information, but it's not infallible. You know, I, I do think some, some things that are, you know, worth taking into account, you know, locally are, we did the streamlining ordinance, that saved a lot of costs and time for developers, you know, that's something that's, it's a You know, that's something that's, it's a local information that's not necessarily, you know, taken into account in that, that model. You know, we have had a fair amount of recent examples of projects that are going above the affordability levels that, that the, this model says are even possible. You know, I think we're seeing a lot of projects use that density bonus, right? You know, I would say in the time I've been on planning commission, probably what, 95% plus projects have, have been density bonus projects. And so, you know, I think to say, oh, well, you know, this is only feasible if we use the density bonus, right? Well, developers are using density bonus. It's a very powerful, you know, tool for, for developers and, and they're, they're taking, you know, taking full use of it. You know, and I, I don't know, you know, being, being on the planning commission over the last, last four years, I think I've developed just a little bit of healthy skepticism when, you know, applicants come before us and say, you know, a greater level of affordability isn't feasible. You know, sometimes, yeah, we, we, just one of the last projects we rejected, you know, come to City Council and, you know, they kind of shake the money tree and, you know, some more affordable units pop out and, you know. So sometimes, you know, it's, hey, it's their right. If I was running a business, I mean, I'd charge whatever I could for whatever I was selling, right? You know, but it's our business to be accountable to the public, right? So, you know, I think there were some interesting ideas, you know, I, I, I'm not totally sure if the, the, you know, what's proposed by, by Homes For All is, you know, is, is going to be feasible and, you know, it's hard to, to know unless you do it. You know, it might be worth, worth, worth trying. You know, I also think there was an interesting point raised, you know, about the Oxnard ordinance, which is looking at, you know, 10% low and 5% very low, rather than kind of what we're looking at of, you know, 15% low, you know, for rentals. I think that could be an interesting compromise between what, what, you know, Homes For All is proposing and, and what our, our, you know, city staff has recommended. But I do think, you know, KMA acknowledged, you know, multiple times throughout the report and verbally that they're taking a conservative approach. It's on us to make a judgment call whether we want to take a conservative approach. You know, but, but I think, you know, ultimately, you know, I, I think we are in the kind of crisis that's worth trying to do the best we can. And even in their conservative approach, they found that 15% of very low is feasible using the density bonus. And we are seeing the vast majority of, of developers using the density bonus. I want to share the, also in that report was a list of communities and their, their inclusionary housing ordinances. And I looked at that list and wrote down a, a sub-list of communities that went beyond the 15% low. That's kind of the default set by the state and, you know, what we're, we're considering for, for rental. So if you'll bear with me, I just want to read their names. Campbell, Colma, Contra Costa County, Coronado, Davis, Palo Alto, Pasadena, Petaluma, Redwood City, San Francisco, San Jose, San Mateo County, Sonoma County, Sunnyvale, and Union City. All of those communities went beyond and, and most of them did something like what, what Oxnard's considering, kind of a mix of low and, and very low. And I think, you know, that, that would really be worth considering. Side note, you know, interested in the point Mr. Bello raised around trying to do a, a permanent covenant, rather than a kind of 55-year covenant for the affordable units. You know, to me, I don't see any reason why they should expire in 55 years. It'd be nice to, to keep them affordable. But I think overall, I'd rather have a strong inclusionary housing ordinance and later change it if development stops and, you know, we find that, that it's, you know, having, you know, negative impacts, then, then actually weaken our inclusionary housing ordinance from even where it is now. And then, you know, get a bunch of development that, you know, with a lower affordability requirement, that then we can never get those units back, right? So anyway, I know I've been talking for a while. I, procedurally, I'd love to see, you know, see if there's support on the commission for to go, to go a bit deeper affordability than, than what staff's recommending here. You know, if that falls flat and we don't have the votes for it, that's, you know, okay and we can, you know, go back to, you know, back to square one. But, but, you know, I'd like to kind of try it out when we get to motions. So that's all for now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Commissioner McCarty.
I have, I actually have some questions I'd like to bring up regarding the, the IHO, the ordinance as it, as it's written, if I may. And one of them is, is Section 2520040, the inclusion, inclusionary housing requirement. Section C says, "For purposes of calculating the number of inclusionary units required, any additional dwelling units authorized as a density bonus under the city density bonus ordinance or state law will not be counted in determining the required number of inclusionary units." And the answer to why that is stated might be obvious, but it's, it's escaping me. Is there a reason why extra units awarded under the density bonus are not, cannot be counted with regard to inclusionary housing?
I think it's a good question, staff. Do we have feedback on that?
I do.
Yeah, Kathy, I was gonna say if you want to jump in or I can.
Right. The NAPA case prohibits you from doing that. So you can't impose affordable housing requirements on density bonus units that are in excess of what's required by the density bonus. So they very specifically established that it can't be done and that's why it's written that way.
Okay. Simple answer. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, now, here comes my question that I alluded to earlier. Section 252090, "In lieu pay, in lieu fees shall be paid according to a fee schedule adopted by the City Council and adjusted annually, et cetera, et cetera." So is there a mechanism in place now which defines how this will actually happen? Does somebody actually have that in their job description to update the in lieu fees annually?
Thank you, Commissioner McCarty. So we, we update our building permit fees, impact fees, and associated development fees on an annual basis. So we will just include that in, in that process of updating our fees and establishing a fee schedule and putting that on there. So that is something we can roll into our staff duties.
Okay. So that'll get recorded somewhere as a, an annual?
Yes, it gets adopted by council, a fee schedule that then is posted and used for all fee calculations.
Okay. In that same section, a little further down, talking about off-site construction. Location of off-site inclusionary units. It states, "The off-site inclusionary units shall be located within one-half mile of the market rate development that is subject to the inclusionary housing requirement, unless the units are located within a moderate or higher resource area as defined by the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee, et cetera." So can somebody give me a layman's interpretation of what that is saying?
Kathy, you want to jump in or I can?
Sure, I can take a shot and then, and then you can jump in. That came out of our discussions when we were having the focus groups with the various, with the nonprofits and the housing advocates and the for-profit developers. The half-mile had been the original suggestion. And then a number of people in the focus groups pointed out that, well, A, a half-mile ends up being kind of a dramatic change, but that there are these high resource areas that are areas that tend to be of higher income, but that tend then not to have affordable housing in them. And so the idea would be, even if that was more than a half-mile away from the site, that would be a good location to spread the inclusionary units around town. And so that, that was, anyway, the short answer was brought up during the focus groups.
Okay. So, so what this clause is saying is that it is desirable to have the off-site inclusionary units in those moderate and higher resource areas?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That explains it, thank you. In the, in the same paragraph, subsection four, "Building design, quality, and maintenance standards shall be of good quality and consistent with contemporary standards for new housing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." Who determines good quality and how is good quality confirmed? If it's stated that shall be, it says shall be of good quality, shall is a requirement. So how do we mandate good quality?
Ned, are you taking that?
I was seeing if Kathy wanted to jump in.
No, I don't want to take that one.
Okay.
So the question underlying this perhaps is, we, if, if we're gonna put good quality in this document, we need a definition of good quality.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner McCarty. These units are gonna go through the normal development process too, that other development projects do go, go through. You know, they go through design review committee or in the appropriate boards that review the design. I think the intention here is to not end up with inclusionary units or inclusionary projects that are substandard in construction or significantly look different than other projects, but to have them designed and constructed with good, good quality materials so that they are kind of equitable in the type of units that are constructed for a market rate. So they'll go through kind of normal review process that market rate projects do in the same fashion.
So, so the underlying assumption is that the current city building codes?
And processes.
Are good, what may be defined as good quality?
Correct.
Okay. A little bit further down, same, same section. It says, "A market rate developer may enter into an agreement with an affordable housing developer to construct, own, and operate the off-site inclusionary units." Are market rate developer and affordable housing developer, formal designations applied to developers? Or are we just saying a market rate developer is just whoever happens to be building the latest market rate units?
I can jump, I can jump in on that one. So, so the notion was if you accepted that, if somebody accepted that option as a developer and they were not an experienced affordable housing developer, the goal of the city would be to have them choose a developer who that was their area of expertise. That can be a for-profit developer or a nonprofit developer. Or it could be the original developer if they choose to do it. But, but the objective would be to get a mission-driven affordable housing developer to do it.
Okay, thank you. Section 2520-100, Restrictions on Ownership Units. This, this section really kind of concerns me because I don't know who will track and monitor some of these things. With regard to sale and resale, "Initial sales prices and resale price of ownership inclusionary units shall be set to an affordable housing cost calculated by the city on the first day of each calendar quarter." So is, is this done now and where is that recorded?
I can jump in on what its plan is and then, and then Neta can perhaps talk about what's being done with the program as it exists. The idea is, is if you set the affordable sales price on the first day of every quarter or once a quarter, once a calendar quarter, then you don't have people buying and selling and gaming the system where that on Wednesday, the interest rate was one thing and on Thursday, it was a different interest rate. And so if you set it quarterly, then you get a consistent price for that whole quarter. And then, and then if it, units or inclusionary units are being sold, they have to close within that, within that quarter or they get reevaluated. It depends from community to community if you have, and this is where I'll, I'll defer to, to Neta. If you have internal staff who can do it, then they're the ones who would produce that once a quarter based on what the ordinance says.
Hi, I think I can give you a perspective of what we're doing currently. We base it on the, and I don't know all of the technical aspects of it, but it's essentially the interest rate at the end of December, the last posted interest rate, and we only do that annually. So that's how the, the pricing is, is determined.
Okay, so this, this will then be kind of an, an extra duty to be incurred if, if we need to do this every quarter?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. "A resale restriction shall be entered into on each change of ownership to maintain the household income restriction on the ownership inclusionary unit for at least 45 years." This is a really detailed requirement in that someone is going to have to keep active track of all of the inclusionary units throughout the city and when each one changes ownership for at least 45 years. Are we plugging all of these new requirements into job descriptions?
We currently do this. It, 45 years is the, the general restriction period for ownership units. And the initial sale to, to a buyer includes a resale restriction requiring them to sell it to an income-eligible buyer in subsequent sales. And, and we manage that.
Okay, within 180 days, correct? The, the next paragraph goes on to state, "Inheritance of an inclusionary unit by any other person whose household is not income-eligible shall require resale to an eligible household as soon as feasible, but not more than 180 days from when the estate is settled." So that's something else to be monitored.
That is something else to be monitored and it is not currently something we do. However, these, these sales are restricted by, have due restrictions on them. So we are now aware of, previously in our older units, we did not have those restrictions recorded. And so we are aware of any transactions because it's all discoverable for, for each sale. So yes, it would be something we would do.
So those transactions would be flagged and somebody at the city would?
Correct, correct.
Owner occupancy. Owners of inclusionary units shall use and occupy the inclusionary unit as the owner's principal residence for at least 10 months out of any 12-month period. How will we monitor and enforce that?
So maybe, and Jenny, please go into further, just an overarching response and then Jenny can go into further detail. So we, we currently do this with our existing housing stock. We partner and contract with these housing authority that helps the city staff, support city staff in monitoring our affordable housing stock, which we can, will continue to do moving forward overwhelmingly. But Jenny, if there's further detail here?
So we currently have a similar requirement. These are owner occupancy units or housing units. And it's not infallible. It's, it is policy that they have to be owner occupants and that they have to occupy it for 12 months. They, they can do un hardship requests if they need to move away for a temporary amount of time. It is a little bit difficult to track that because it's not a actual real estate transaction. So we have to rely on, on the owners to be responsible about that. But we do, the housing authority does administer the program and they do annual occupancy verifications.
Very good, very good. "The, the owners of the inclusionary units have to certify each tenant's income at the time of the initial rental. The owner shall obtain and review documents that demonstrate the total income, such as income tax returns, and submit such information on a form approved by the city." And this might be a question for counsel, for Mr. Hogan. Is, is the requirement to give tax returns to your landlord and the, and, and further to the city, is that, is that legal? Is that usual?
Excuse me, Commissioner McCarty, could you refer to the language one more time?
The owner, so this is talking about the owner of rental inclusionary units. They shall certify the tenant's household income to the city or designate at the time of initial rental. The owner shall obtain and review documents that demonstrate the prospective renter's total income, such as income tax returns.
Yes, that is appropriate.
Okay, good. That answers that question. I'd like to follow up on Mr. Bello's comment and the comment from Commissioner Zucker that was made regarding the- was made regarding the length of the covenant. I would also like to open up the discussion as to why we can't have an indefinite covenant, perpetual covenant, rather than the 45 or 55 years, which is already in the, in the proposed ordinance. I'd like to see a perpetual covenant, if there's no reason not to.
I can, I can take a shot at this, and then anybody else who wants to jump in. I think on rental, that makes perfect sense. So I think what I've been recommending in the programs that I'm working on is to say that it's at least 55 years or until it's no longer put to a residential use. So it's just to create something so that if suddenly this isn't a residential neighborhood anymore, and it's not residentially zoned, then it's no longer required to be affordable. But under every circumstance, it's required to be 55 years or forever, as long as it's residential. So that's my recommendation for just a little bit of a nuance on that. On ownership, I think it's trickier. I think that over time, if you, if the unit has to be sold and resold at what will likely be not much of a gain and quite possibly a loss, you know, people who bought 10 years ago an affordable unit are today probably facing an affordable cost that was less than what they paid for. So you have owners who have taken all of the downside risk and gotten really none of the upside benefit, and this becomes, I think, a policy matter. So this is, this isn't, this is just a policy matter for you all to consider, is, are you trying to create a unit that stays forever, which is likely the case? Or are you trying to help a family create some equity and then be able to move up and out, which is another policy that I've seen in these programs? So the 45 years sort of creates the blend of that, of you have people buying and selling, buying and selling it affordable, but then at some point, it goes to market and somebody made some equity. But more importantly to me than back from the financial perspective is, when you have property owners who don't have a lot of chance for equity appreciation, and their house needs more and more repairs over time, there's a natural incentive not to do them because you're not going to be able to make it up when you, when you resell. And so, and just different people, different homeowners have different resources. So it just becomes tricky. Again, this is a policy matter, but those are just my points on that.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if we can have, we have Ethan Walsh, who is our consultant attorney on the line too. Ethan, do you mind chiming in on this as well?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I can't seem to figure out how to turn my camera on, but, but Neta, when I was elevated, I missed part of your, part of your request. Could you repeat it for me, please?
Sure, Ethan. Commissioner McCarthy, do you mind repeating it for Mr. Walsh?
Basically, it boils down to, I would be in favor of a perpetual covenant rather than the 45 or 55 years written into the current proposed ordinance. And I would, I was just curious, as my question as posed was, is there any reason why we couldn't or shouldn't go to a perpetual covenant?
Right. So I did hear that part, actually. So I think, I think Kathy handled that question pretty well. As far as rental, you know, I think I've seen that quite a bit, too. The one caveat, I would say, is that when you have projects that are subsidized with other forms of financing, for example, tax credits in particular, there are some challenges if you have perpetual, if you have perpetual covenants, because the, when they finance those projects, part of the assumption that they make when they are obtaining the tax credits is that there will eventually be equity at the end of the, at the end of the covenant term. And so with those projects, I think there's a bit more of a challenge to perpetual covenants, but I have seen in a lot of communities as to inclusionary units that they do have perpetual covenants, and I think they work. In ownership, I think, as I mentioned, Kathy covered that well. The one thing I would say is that, as you may know, when we talk about, you know, ownership of real property, there's a kind of a bundle of sticks that is associated with that, where you have, you know, certain, certain things that come with ownership. And one of those is the assumption that eventually there will be, you know, the ability to resell that property and benefit from the, from the, from the equity that you gain. That's one of the real key components of home ownership, and one of the things that people look to, also the ability to borrow against it and that type of thing. If you limit the, if you limit the affordability perpetually for ownership units, you are, you are taking kind of a fundamental component of the ownership structure from those folks. And in some, in some cases, it does, you know, cause a disincentive to reinvest in the house. And I have seen in programs where it causes some frustration amongst buyers because they don't really understand that fully at the time they buy the house, and then when they realize that they are kind of limited in what they can get when they eventually have to move on, they have some frustration associated with that. So that's, that's my thought. But ultimately, as Kathy mentioned, I do think it's a policy issue.
Okay. Good. Thank you. My overall impression of what's being proposed tonight is that I think that KMA and Ms. Head have done a tremendous job in their analysis, in their second and follow-up analysis. And I'm very impressed with, with the output. I also want to acknowledge that I hear what my neighbors say. I hear the comments from VSTF representatives. I hear the comments from Homes For All. I am appreciative of the comments of my fellow commissioners. But my, my view is this. I think the analysis and experience of KMA and Ms. Head have, have shown that there exists a tipping point. I believe, I'm familiar with, with tipping points, and we have to be very cognizant of the tipping point, which would be detrimental to the, what we're trying to achieve. We want more affordable housing. Nobody denies that. I don't deny that. But we have to be aware of the point at which the regulations we put in place will discourage, rather than encourage, developers from building the affordable housing we need. I think that Ms. Head has, has found that tipping point, and I, I am very much inclined to agree with her analysis, and I'm in favor of the numbers with regard to the percentages of low, low-income units for rental, for rentals, and moderate-income units for ownership that are proposed in her, in her analysis. So that's, that's where I am right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Davis, comments, questions?
Um, I, yeah, there's the numbers again getting me all, but the, I, yeah, and I feel like Commissioner Farkas, that I thought what we did before was good. So it's disappointing to hear that it's changed, you know, to the lower numbers. I, and I, there are so many, the state density bonuses that are coming online, there's a lot of really great opportunities that are coming up for developers that want to go in that direction and then get those bonuses that then, it's kind of funny, because I actually was sort of thinking like, yeah, we all talk about like, oh, these density bonuses are great because it'll create more affordability, but then it also creates strife within the community of like, there's not enough parking, and this going up taller, you know, and so it's, it's an interesting kind of juxtaposition, I guess. I definitely support, you know, having as much affordability as we can. It's, but I don't, you know, economics is a little bit out of my realm for sure in terms of the, the housing market. So I would want to defer to her, to the analysis that's been done by the experts, really, because I, you know, I don't, I don't have more than that, and that I know that we have a lot of, we have, you know, groups in our community that are pursuing, you know, they do 100% affordability, and they work that out, and the opportunities coming from the state. So I want to support what, what's being proposed. And I think in terms of the covenant, I think, you know, there hasn't been, we haven't seen like what the difference is by going with, without a covenant. And so I think at this time, that's like, I mean, that's an interesting point to consider for the future, but I think I would rather just get this going and approve it. And as we said, you know, it's flexible, and things change, and we could, it could be something that's analyzed in the future and potentially amended, because I would rather get something going and support it and get it going. So I think that's where I'm at right now, listening to everything, thinking that I don't really have any kind of additional valuable information about economics, so that's.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Lagerquist, comments?
Yes. Thank you. Wow, this is an incredibly difficult subject. I had two kind of quick questions. I just, Neta, if you could explain one more time quickly, kind of the relationship between the density bonus and the, and the IHO, and how they affect each other. You know, if we pass an IHO that has a certain percentage, then is the density bonus automatically applied to those projects? Or can you just clarify that for me?
Sure. So the inclusionary housing ordinance would be what a project is required to build in terms of inclusionary units within their project. State density bonus law allows certain thresholds and amounts of units based on formulas they've established in their law that can be used for a developer to increase their density and get concessions, incentives basically, to relaxation and standards to build them. So the developer for a project could meet its inclusionary housing, go deeper into affordability to meet state density bonus requirement, and fulfill both requirements together. So that's how they relate.
Perfect. Thank you. And then one thing that hasn't come up much in our discussions is the in-lufi's. I wondered if Kathy had any stats on how often developers actually go down the in-lufi route as opposed to building the affordable units. Do we have any stats on that?
So the situation on in-lufi, it's in a number of jurisdictions, in-lufis are allowed by right, so a developer can choose to pay the in-lufi. In a number of jurisdictions, they're only allowed, this is two ends of the, the cycle, are only allowed to pay an extreme hardship, and then somewhere in between is where most cities fall in. And in-lufi, that's that very close to the affordability gap, a developer, if they have the right to choose it with no limitation, will generally choose the in-lufi. Because then they get to keep all the upside potential from their project, and they have a known amount of money that it's going to cost them, as opposed to who knows how much it's going to end up being the affordability gap, et cetera. So it's important on an in-lufi then to be careful when you're trying to encourage production, to have an in-lufi that isn't too attractive, which is what a number of the commenters said, so that every developer, if they, if they have unfettered right to use it, will just take it. You can then use that money to, you know, provide leveraged affordable housing that's dedicated to affordable housing. And that was part of that in-lufi analysis we did last February, to say how, how far that money would go. But all things being equal, if a developer's allowed to pay the fee by right, they'll pay the fee.
Perfect. That, that was great. Thank you. So, you know, as I've been listening to everyone, and honestly, I, you know, I could say, well, I pretty much agree, even though the, the opinions have been somewhat variable, I think we can all agree that we could all agree with each other. Like, it's just a very complicated subject. You know, we're trying to predict the future, we're trying to understand and mitigate the repercussions of what we're doing tonight, and I think that's really hard to do. You know, I really appreciate Kathy's presentation and the amount of work that went into that. However, I would say that that was a, even if it wasn't necessarily a snapshot in time as she integrated a lot of, you know, over time, things like she using a year's worth of data or information. You know, our market right now is all over the place, and I'm hesitant to trust all the decisions that we make tonight on this one analysis. So I guess what I'm getting at is I would actually agree with Commissioner Zucker. I feel like, you know, the, the objectives of the IHO, you know, we have two objectives we're trying to reach, which is to encourage development, but also to create affordable housing. And I feel like the state has created so much for cities to encourage development, whether we want to or not, we're seeing that already, that, you know, maybe it is our job to encourage the affordable housing. And I, so I would actually like to go down the road of making the IHO a little bit stronger, and, you know, recognizing that, having said that, that I don't want to not do it at all. Like, I, you know, I want to make sure we leave tonight with, with something to, to give to city council. But I just feel like we're really going to miss an opportunity if we don't try to meet an objective of an inclusionary housing ordinance, which is to create more affordable units for our city. A couple speakers spoke of, you know, integrating communities and, you know, having a place for people that work in our city to also live. And if we're not even looking at very low income, then, then we're kind of, you know, missing the point of an inclusionary housing ordinance from, from my chair. So I would definitely like to see, you know, us maybe look at the rental as, well, so I can, I'll just list it out. So I would support perpetuity on rental projects unless there's a zoning change, as Kathy discussed, for the covenant, but limit the covenant for ownership to 45 years. I think that all makes sense. I'd like, also would like to see stronger in-lufis. I'm not sure how we do that, how we quantify that tonight, but I think that's important just based on what we just talked about. And then, you know, maybe go back to where we were at in February, or even a little stronger, maybe 10% low income, 5% very low for rentals, 15% low, and the 20% mod, or the 20% moderate for ownership. That's kind of where I'm at, but I'm definitely willing to talk a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Other, other comments? Okay. I want to bring it back to the letter that was submitted by Homes For All. There's a lot of very intelligent people who are signators on that letter. I want to read an excerpt of it. Commissioner Zucker spoke to it in a certain generality, but I want to read you a portion of it. "The city is meeting the need of the above moderate income housing," and as we know, that's a six-figure, you know, income. "During the period of 2013 through '21, it met 103.6% of the RENA need for above moderate income households, but it only met 15.9% of the need for extremely low and very low-income households, 9.8% of the need for low-income households, and 11.4% of the need for moderate-income households." What that means is we're 90% off of what we could be, should be doing, according to these targets. It goes on to state, "A strong inclusionary housing ordinance is one of the few tools that the city has to address its requirements to affirmatively further fair housing." I thought this sentence was very interesting coming. "It will help to address historic patterns of segregation." And that's something that I hadn't really considered before, which is where are the affordable houses being built? And it got me thinking about why I feel that in-lufis are important to have, have very strong ones, because I want the developer to build affordable housing within the unit they're building, not so that we accumulate money in a particular area and build it somewhere else, that those people are somewhere else. That's that housing red line that I don't want to exist. I want to live in a community where everyone of all sorts live together and co-mingle. That's being social. I, we're an advisory board, and in such, the final decision will go to council, but I want to send a strong message that this is a community that wants to do right by those of lesser means, that we want and need people, uh, that don't have tremendous incomes in our community. And so I'm going to advocate for the strongest, um, percentages of affordability in, in this, that, that we can, we can muster, taking into account the economics of it. I wish we had someone from, uh, a developer's standpoint who got up and spoke tonight, telling us straight to our faces that this is not possible, that we will not be able to build. Uh, maybe they're keeping their powder dry until the final decision makers, um, have the opportunity to consider this. But I wish they were here tonight. Obviously, we have many advocates in the community that speak to the affordability and how we can tackle that. But, you know, there are communities, uh, in, in our state, um, that aren't doing what we could be doing. Uh, in Carmel and La Jolla and places like that are very nice places. But that isn't the profile of Ventura. Ventura is a working-class town with many people and many generations of people who have been here that don't have large incomes. And, uh, the, the economic state of the county and the city, for that matter, are less on a trajectory than many other portions of the state. We're, we're not doing as well as we could. And I don't want to drive out people, uh, that have been here simply because they can't afford to. And the past 15, 10, 15 years, it's been an incredible acceleration in costs here. And many people, um, on their, are on their way out simply because they can't afford to be here. And that's, that's not a good sign. So I'm going to advocate for the strongest, uh, possible, um, percentages of affordability. Um, on the permanent covenant issue, um, I think on the rentals, it is a good idea. And for some of the reasons given about the purchases, because if you're not going to make money on the sale, you're not going to invest in that unit, uh, I think the 45-year covenant is long enough. Most people do not stay in their home for 45 years. So in that way, it could be a bit of a luck of the draw. If someone purchases it and lasts, in the end of that 45 years, they might benefit from that. But that can be addressed, uh, in the future. Uh, as many people have said, whether in written form or verbally, we need to do something and it needs to be done now. So I don't think more studying of this, uh, things can be changed. If we find that we dialed back too much, it can be loosened. Uh, but I want to send a strong message to council. Um, so I'm going to advocate for the, the strongest measure possible. With that, um, is there more consideration? Yes?
I have a comment on that.
Commission, yes.
This is an advisory board. Um, part of this advisory board is for us to look at the facts. And the facts that are before us are from someone who, this is what she does for a living. She's done it for many, many communities. And, um, I, I'm going to go back to supply and demand. It's really important that we get these units built. And if we push for an ordinance that is too strong, I think it's going to stop some development. Maybe a lot of development to go through. And we need these units now, you know, we need more units now. If we say, okay, let's push through this really strong ordinance and, um, nothing gets built for the next, you know, five years, I think that's detrimental to the community. Um, that means we're going backwards. So I just want everybody to really take that into consideration. I, like I said originally, I was happy with what we did originally back in February, um, with the 15% for both. I, I think if, you know, I understand that the numbers show that the 10%, 15 and 10 now, but I would, you know, compromise and do the 15 and 15 for the rental, um, and the sale. But I'm not gonna, I don't feel comfortable, um, as much as I want to, I just, and as, as wonderful as it seems, you know, on, on a note when, you know, in a perfect world, we'd love to see all this stuff done. It, we don't live in a perfect world. And I want to see as many units get built for and to do the, the best for the most people. And I think that's been studied and studied. And, um, and I, I, I don't want to go backwards. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Zucker.
Um, well, I'd like to, to, you know, get to, get to motions and, you know, get us, get us moving here. I, I agree with, with everyone's sentiments that, you know, this has got to move on from our hands tonight, from Planning Commission to City Council. Um, and, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time on this, even before it got to Planning Commission. We've spent a lot of time on this. Uh, you know, when I first joined the commission, I was told inclusionary housing ordinance was right around the corner. And, you know, here we are four years later, right? Um, you know, but, uh, the one thing I would just, you know, briefly say, you know, I, I appreciate that some, you know, some smart heads went into, you know, the, the analysis before us. Um, you know, I do think it's, I wouldn't characterize it as the facts. I'd characterize it as a combination of, you know, evidence and judgments. It's a, it's a model that has some assumptions plugged in and has some judgments. It has some choices to be conservative. And so, um, you know, I, I think it's our, it's our judgment to choose what we do with that, that evidence and, um, what it points to. And I think that the folks here with Homes For All, they're not kind of naive, random commenters. I mean, these are the, the, you know, these are the biggest affordable housing developers in our, in our city, in this, in the Homes For All coalition. I mean, these are the people who live and breathe every day building affordable housing and, you know, building homeless supportive housing and things like that. And so, um, you know, I think they, they really come with a wealth of, of lived experience, of experience directly in our local community and the conditions here. And so, um, you know, I, I really have immense respect for that. So, um, you know, that, that being said, you know, I want to make a motion for a little bit deeper affordability. Uh, you know, if we don't have the votes for that, and, you know, some of that may have depended on Commissioner Abbey being sick today and, you know, the, uh, the fates of the world, right? But, uh, but, um, you know, if we don't have the votes for that, you know, I'm, I, uh, I'm, you know, potentially willing to, to, you know, go with what Commissioner Farkas suggested around, maybe doing the 15 and 15. But I'd like to see maybe if we have the votes for, uh, looking at the, you know, what, what Oxxnard is considering, um, which would be, uh, you know, I'd like to make a motion to take our proposed inclusionary housing ordinance that, that staff's put before us and adjust the affordability rates to 10% low and 5% very low for rentals, and 10% moderate and 5% low for sale. Um, and, and, uh, adjust the, the in-lufis accordingly. Um, you know, and put the affordability covenant, uh, in perpetuity for the rentals. Uh, you know, I agree with others that it doesn't make sense to do on the, on the homeowner's side. Um, and, you know, see what that, what that gets us. So I'd like to make that motion.
All right. A motion is on the floor.
Can I just, before we finish the motion, that point, can we, can we understand from the city? Because I sense a, some perhaps multiple motions having to be dealt with.
All right.
So I just want to make sure that we understand, because we, this is what happened the last time. We ran into some issues and I, just trying to avoid that. So maybe the city could, you know, guide the Planning Commission on how this will work. If, you know, if we tie on one of the votes and do we get to do another vote on a different motion? Like, how does that work? Real quick.
Uh, yes, Commissioner. Um, so if, if there's an initial, uh, motion, um, then if there's a amendment to that motion or a substitute motion, then that motion would be heard first. And if that does not pass, then you would return to the original motion and that would be considered. And if, and if a motion is considered and it fails, then another motion can be brought and considered. Um, and, um, the city clerk, if, I think it could be helpful, if you could, to put a document on the screen and, are you able to do that and actually write out the motion? Um, so it's visible for, for everyone?
Unfortunately, I'm not able to. Um, the reason for that is that the Microsoft Word account is not currently active on either of these computers.
Okay.
My apologies for that. We're working on getting a new PIN. Um, if there is any possibility that staff at the table, uh, may be able to, I could also potentially join the WebEx and share my screen that way, as I do have Word on my laptop. So if you allow me a couple of minutes to do so, I could potentially do that as an option. And my apologies, we're working on getting our Microsoft Word account updated.
And with six members, a tie fails.
And if I could have Commissioner Zucker repeat back for me, I have to recommend the inclusion, uh, inclusionary housing ordinance that staff, uh, has proposed, but adjusting the affordability to 10% low income, 5% very low income for rentals, adjusting the in-lufis accordingly, and adjusting the covenants, uh, to be in perpetuity. I did miss the second part of the affordable, affordability piece, excuse me.
And then for sale, it was 10% moderate and 5% low.
All right.
And keeping the, um, keeping the, the timeline on the affordability covenant.
Okay. Thank you. If you allow me to take a little bit of time here to join the WebEx and get this typed up, I could have that in momentarily.
Okay. Well, while we're waiting for that, is there someone who has a, an additional motion? Yes?
Uh, is there a second to that motion? We don't currently have a second.
Okay.
So the motion is still on the floor?
Let's do that first. Is there a second to the first motion?
Yes, I will second that motion.
All right. Very good. With that, is there a second motion to be run for this time?
I would like to make a substitute motion. And I move that we approve the proposed inclusionary housing program ordinance as presented with one change, and that is to change the rental covenant to perpetual.
I'll second that.
All right. So we now, um, are we going to try and execute this on the screen?
It, it's a, the challenge is to capture that while writing and still attempting to type here. So.
Absolutely.
Little challenging for me, but, um, if I could repeat back the substitute motion, I have a motion made by Commissioner McCarty, seconded by Commissioner Farkas, to approve the proposed inclusionary housing ordinance as presented with one change, to adjust the rental covenant to perpetuity.
Yes, exactly.
That's our current motion on the floor.
Can Mike, I make a friendly procedural suggestion? Um, Commissioner McCarty's entitled to have his motion voted on first because it was the substitute motion. Um, my, my suggestion is maybe that we, we vote on the original motion first, um, because I think many of us who, who might support the original motion for a little deeper affordability, if that motion fails, would be willing to support, you know, Commissioner McCarty's motion or, or, you know, or another, another motion, right?
Is that permissible or must we go in the order?
Um, you can, Commissioner Zucker, you can request a friendly amendment, um, but procedurally, um, the substitute motion does need to be considered first.
However, if the substitute motion fails and the primary, the first motion fails, then we can come back and receive another motion.
I guess I'm trying to prevent us from maybe having a tie vote that fails on that motion, tie vote that fails on the original motion, and then having you a third motion.
Yeah, I'm confused since Commissioner Zucker did his motion first. Why aren't we, why aren't we voting on that one first?
Uh, under the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which the, uh, city council protocols adopt, which apply to city council and all of the, uh, advisory bodies as well, um, once a motion is made, if then a substitute motion is made and seconded, then the substitute motion is what is considered, uh, first. And if that fails, then the original motion, uh, would then be considered.
Take it away with Mr. Rosenberg. All right. Do we need to see this on screen or are we clear on what the two motions are? Okay.
And I'm happy to repeat back the motions.
Okay. Please do.
If the commission denies.
So let's, let's begin with the substitute because we'll be voting on that. But.
Sure.
State both, please.
Sure. So the substitute motion, I have to, um, approve the inclusionary housing ordinance as proposed with one change. That change being that the rental covenant be changed to perpetuity. Uh, that was a motion made by Commissioner McCarty, seconded by Commissioner Farkas. I have the original motion made by Commissioner Zucker, seconded by Commissioner Lagerquist, to approve the inclusionary housing ordinance that staff has proposed, uh, and to adjust for rentals, the affordability to 10% low income, 5% very low income, for for-sale to 10% moderate income and 5% low income, and to adjust the in-lufis accordingly, and to adjust the covenants for, uh, perpetuity for rentals and the timeline on the covenants for the for-sale. Does that capture the motion?
I believe it does. Do the motion makers agree?
Uh, yeah. Keep, keeping the, keeping the, uh, you know, sunset on the for-sale. That's my motion.
Yeah.
Is everyone clear on the motions?
Motion makers agree.
Which are we, and which are we voting?
So we'll be voting on the substitute motion first, which again was the one change for the rental covenant in perpetuity.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll just speak on that. I, you know, that, that I, I plan to vote no on that motion. I would love to actually support it. I just want to get a chance to vote on higher affordability and then maybe if we end up coming back to it.
All right. Very good. Any other comments? All right. Mr. Clerk, please take the role out of the vote.
Okay. On the substitute motion, Commissioner Abbey is absent. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Farkas?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
No.
Commissioner, excuse me, Vice Chair Lagerquist?
No.
And Chair Comden?
No.
Tie vote and the motion fails. So we will go back to the original motion, uh, just for clarity, one more time. I've got the inclusionary housing ordinance as proposed by staff with adjusting the affordability for rentals to 10% low income, 5% very low income, to adjust the affordability for fails, for-sale, excuse me, to 10% moderate, 5% low income, to adjust the in-lufis accordingly, and, uh, for rentals, to have the covenants in perpetuity, and to, uh, for the for-sale, the timeline on the covenants. If you could clarify that last piece on the timeline on the covenants for, for, for-sale.
Uh, that the, the covenants would expire, as is in the current draft ordinance, um, for the for-sale.
Thank you. So the timeline on the covenant stays the same for the for-sale and adjusts for the, uh, for the rentals. Is everyone clear on the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Abbey is absent. Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner Farkas?
No.
Commissioner McCarty?
No.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lagerquist?
Yes.
Chair Comden?
Yes.
A tie vote and the motion fails.
So now we go to penalty kicks? Is that what happens?
Someone's got a drag mark in here.
I, uh, I, just a suggestion, because I, I, I think what I would feel more comfortable with is doing the, um, the rental per your suggestion, but the for-sale sticking with it as proposed. Because I think that the, I think the rental is where the most lacking is. And what it seemed like in the numbers, if I, and I'm, and I told you, I'm not positive I, that I get all of it. But to me, I felt like, just what I was feeling is that I would feel more comfortable about wanting more out of the rentals, but sticking with the for-sale, um, you know, per the, the recommendation. I mean, that's.
I would support that.
I've, that would, that would be my, I would, that would be a suggested amendment.
Sounds like a motion.
Okay, that's, my motion is, oh wait, do, would you like, you want to have a discussion?
Yes, of course. Uh, but hold on, we need a first and a second here. So, Mr. Clerk, are you?
Maybe discuss and then maybe it'll modify the way.
Before we, before we get a second?
So the motion's withdrawn?
Yeah.
Currently?
Right. I didn't make it. I was, I was lobbing something out to see if I could get it, get it done.
So that's a very compelling potential motion. I do have, if I'm, if I may, um, Kathy Head, are you still on the line with us? Uh, can, can I ask a question of, of Ms. Head?
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Um, so did you, uh, hear, uh, Commissioner Davis's potential proposed motion with regard to, uh, the rental units?
I did.
Okay. What, what, what's your gut reaction to such a motion, such a proposal?
My gut reaction is, so it just, I know we're all repeating things over and over again, just so that it.
density bonus for rental and you will likely end up with 15% very low. I'm just not comfortable recommending 15% very low.
Good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. So would you like to make your motion, please?
Yes. I would like to make a motion for the rentals to be 10% low and 5% very low and removing the covenants, to make it perpetual, right?
Yes.
Perpetuity and perpetuity, the other P word, and that the ownership be as proposed 15% and remain with the covenant over the 45 years and all of the other amended language that has been suggested.
Commissioner Davis, the proposal is 10%.
10%, sorry. 10% as proposed, yes, all right.
Moderate.
Yes. And adjust the in lieu fees per, as...
Commissioner Farkas, did you have a comment at this?
No, I was just saying the same thing that Neta, that it was the 10%.
All right. So we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
That's a good sign. Very good. Further discussion? All right. Would you please take the vote?
Sure. So on the motion then, I have to approve the inclusionary housing ordinance as proposed, adjusting the rental affordability to 10% low, 5% very low, to adjust the covenants in perpetuity and adjust the in lieu fees accordingly and to keep the ownership as proposed.
Yes.
Does that capture the motion? Okay. Everyone clear? Okay. Commissioner Abbey is absent. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Farkas?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarty?
Yes.
Commissioner Zucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lagerquist?
Yes.
And Chair Comden?
Yes.
Six ayes and the motion carries.
Well done. Well done. All right. An important decision. Let's see what council does with it. Okay, now we move on to staff communication.
Thank you, Chair Comden, Planning Commissioners. Just that your newly adopted calendar puts our next meeting into January, and that's January 25th. Have a happy holidays and a happy new year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Miles, did you have an announcement?
Oh, yes, just briefly, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I just wanted to note that our City Attorney's Office is fully staffed again now as of a few weeks ago. I want to introduce you to Chris De La Vega. He's in the front row, the only other person with a tie on. And he will likely be joining these meetings starting next month or the month following. So please welcome Chris. Thank you.
Welcome, Chris. Yes, Commissioner Farkas.
I just want to say that I've been on this planning commission for eight years and this is my last meeting. And I want to thank everyone. I have learned so much and grown so much, and I am so respectful for everyone here. We all have differences of opinions. We all try to represent different parts of the city. We live in a very diverse city, and it's wonderful to see a diverse planning commission. As we just saw, we worked through some stuff and that was amazing. I'm incredibly proud of the work that I have done and the work that you guys are going to do in the future, and it's been an honor and bittersweet. I'm happy I'm going to have some time back. But it's been a really wonderful experience for me. So thank you all for being part of that experience and teaching me and letting me be Chair via Zoom for many, many meetings because of COVID. I mean, I've been through, I'm on my, you know, third community development director. I've had at least two city managers, and it's just been a lot of different people here, and it's been a really wonderful experience. So thank you all very much. And happy holidays and happy new year, and you'll probably see me over there raising my arms.
Well, Jane, I'm sure I speak on behalf of the other Commissioners. Your wisdom, experience, passion, concern has done the city proud, and we thank you very much for your service, and you will be missed. So best of luck in the future.
Thank you so much.
All right. With that, I wish everybody a happy holiday. Please spread the cheer and goodwill. We're all in this together, and I'm glad this community cares enough to stick around and say the important things. It helps us make decisions, which we all hope helps everyone. Thank you very much. Anything else? All right. I'm going to bang the gavel one last time. This meeting is adjourned.